Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the July eighth twenty twenty five meeting of the Town of Newcastle Town Board. Uh the board has been an executive session and I'd like to ask for motion to open the public work session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, um today we're going to start with our annual comprehensive financial report. And uh before I hand it over to um our finance, our auditor, I just wanna welcome um Alan Casse from O'Connor Davies.
Thank you.
Once again, welcome Alan. And I also want to welcome our our controller, um Carl Schlegel for his first uh first, wait, you can't see him now, he's sitting in the audience, but Carl will uh give his uh inaugural, uh this is the second quarter financial update and so I wanna welcome Carl to his first uh town board meeting. Alright, um Rob, do you wanna to start or should we go right to Alan?
Sure.
So I'll I'll just point out Alan, I think you're gonna probably start with the auditor's opinion, uh the management.
I was gonna start with the transmittal letter, but uh we could start with the opinion.
Okay. Uh so I'm just, so what you have, you've got a bound copy of the uh act for uh which are the financial statements. And then in the packet, the first, I don't know, going from pages five to about twenty or so is the uh management letter. So uh you're gonna have to jump back and forth.
Okay, so we will start with the independent auditors report, which is actually numbered page one. But for whatever reason, it's not numbered one, but it's if you find page two. It's right after the certificate. If you turn right, please do that, turn to rub with the mirror eighteen. I just wanted to point something out, that's it.
Oh, yes.
Mm-hmm, this is the certificate of achievement that the town received for the December thirty first twenty twenty three report. Every year you submit the act for and you apply for the certificate, you were awarded it in twenty twenty three. And it's the twenty seventh consecutive year that the town has received this award. Which is a very prestigious accomplishment. There aren't many towns within the state that could claim twenty seven years of consecutive awards. Because if you look at this report in detail, there's a lot that has to go into this. In the back, you have a statistical section, which has ten years worth of data. For debt and a variety of other factors, so there's a lot of work that goes into this. And uh you should be very proud that you have this award. Do they still give you the pen?
We do, yep.
Yeah, you have to go.
Used to give a plaque each year, then of uh I don't know, ten or twelve years ago, they went to the single plaque and they give you a little medallion for each year that you.
Right, they used to give you a nice wooden plaque with the certificate of achievement, but then they, like Rob said, they give you a little round metal disc.
Well, now we've we have so many that they're just gonna keep up, gonna keep up with us.
We have a wall, yeah.
But um I I just wanna recognize our amazing staff. And this year, I think the thanks goes to both Rob and Carl for splitting up the year. But we are really fortunate to have such talented and dedicated staff and so.
Our our entire staff too. We have Diana Cafarelli's been with the town longer than I have, uh in the business over thirty years.
Right.
But with the town, I think about twenty and uh she's really, she's she helps that office run and and we have an experienced staff, James, uh and then Caterina with payroll is our newest, but it's a great staff all.
Yes, we've big congratulations to the entire entire staff. You do amazing work and we are really lucky to have you, so thank you.
And I would agree with that, because it makes my job much easier.
Great. Yes.
Okay, so now if we could turn to page one, which is the independent auditors report. It's right after the certificate. This is the only pages in this report that actually belong to us. Everything else is the town's, okay? Um the first paragraph where it says opinions, it describes all we did. So we audited the financial statements of the town of Newcastle for the year ended December thirty first twenty twenty four. The paragraph below it is the opinion. In our opinion, the company financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the town as of December thirty first twenty twenty four. That's known as a unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. It's the best opinion you can receive. If you look down to the third paragraph, the cumulative effect of change in accounting principle. The Government Accounting Standards Board, also known as GASBEE, issued a statement that was implemented this year, statement one oh one. It has to do with compensated absences. Um like a lot of the other GASBEE statements, this does not affect your budget, it does not affect your funds. It's primarily for the full accrual statements, the statement net position and statement of activities. It's just that you have to now basically record an estimate of how much unused compensated absences will be used in the subsequent year. So I just wanted to point that out, if you look at that, if I don't bear any on that. Um if you turn to page four, which is management's discussion of analysis. This is similar to the transmittal letter at the beginning of the report, but it's more it's written in layman's terms as opposed to more technical terms as required in order to get the act for. And I'm not gonna go through it, it's pages four through sixteen. And it describes everything that happened in the town the current year. If we could turn to page seventeen. Okay, this is the statement of net position. This is the full accrual statement, where you have to record your capital assets in the top portion of the page. And the details for that is on page forty three within the report. And you also have to record all your non-current liabilities under the liability section. And that's information is all on page forty four. If you look at the bottom of the the second lineup, you'll see that the unrestricted net position has a deficit of almost forty five million dollars. The reason for that is, or one reason for that is in the long-term liabilities, that number seventy five eighty nine thirty two, the non-current is your other post-employment benefit liability, which is another GASBEE statement requirement. And basically that takes the every employee within the town. What your liability would be for their health insurance from this point in time until they're all deceased, basically.
This is the part that I always complain about vociferously every year. But uh people might get alarmed who have not seen this before, but it is not, just an unrealistic accounting of all future possible uh based on employee benefits to the end of time.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
And all municipalities have this on their books. It's unrealistic. This is not money that is owed now.
No.
And um so this is not um, this does not mean that we're in trouble.
Absolutely.
And this is, this is throughout New York.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean basically the liability at the end of this year is fifty four million dollars. Just for the other post-employment benefits, also not a job half, okay? It doesn't affect your fund, the general fund, or maybe your other funds, or maybe your special districts funds. It doesn't affect your budget. You budget what you pay for the retirees' health insurance every year.
And you know, Alan, I just uh, I don't wanna spend too much time on this.
Okay.
But why, why do they want to know this and why do they want this on our books?
I think the reason, when they had, when the GASBEE came up with the full accrual statement was back in two thousand and five, I believe. They wanted to make all entities that issued debt on a level playing field, okay? Since municipalities normally did not record all this debt on their books. And a commercial entity or a private entity issued bonds or debt and they had it on their books. If you compare the two financial statements, their opinion was that you're not comparing apples to apples. But this is certainly not representative of the town. If you've ever sat in on a bond raving call with Moody's or S and P, this page and the next page are never discussed.
Right.
It's never brought up. So what you said earlier is absolutely correct.
Okay. Okay, alright.
Okay.
We'll revisit this again next year.
Alright.
We'll go over it again next year.
We certainly will, okay. So now if we could turn to page sixty six. This is really what's going on in the town. This is the general fund schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance of budget and actual. On the left-hand side, you have the activity for twenty twenty four. And comparative information for twenty twenty three is on the right side of the page. Uh the top portion of the revenues, and going left to right in the columns, you have the original budget, the final budget, the actual, and then the variance with the final budget. So for twenty twenty four, the total revenues are up about one point six million or six percent from the prior year. And if you look down the variance, uh the variance with the final budget column, you'll see that there are some fairly large vari- positive variances. The non-property taxes had a positive variance of six hundred and sixty three thousand. And that's from the sales tax distribution. The use of money in property had a positive variance of eight hundred and fifteen thousand. That's all interest for the most part. Licenses and permits had a positive variance of almost six hundred thousand. Most part of that running from the building permits. And the state aid had a positive variance of a hundred and seventy four thousand. But the mortgage tax, which for years had been increasing and increasing, was slightly down in the current year, okay? Now, the reason for the large variances, for the most part, is that when budget is put together, it's put together for the revenues very conservatively. Reason being, aside from the property taxes, the town or any other municipality for the most part has no control of the revenues. The state aid, the interest, the sales tax and so forth. So it's usually budgeted on a very conservative basis, which is what's recommended. So for the year, you had a positive variance of two point one million on the revenues. On the expenditures, the total for the year was almost twenty five billion, which was down slightly from the prior year, a hundred and seventy three thousand, less than one percent. Which main, which meant that you basically stayed within your budget and it did not increase significantly, which is a good thing. And then if you look at the other financing sources and uses, if you look at the transfers out, it's a one point six million. Last year was um a little under three point one million, three million thirteen thousand. The reason being is one point four million of that, million six, went to capital. Last year, there was a larger contribution to capital. And then if you look at the third number up from the bottom in the actual column, it's seven hundred and sixty four thousand. That's your net change in fund balance. And if you look across to twenty twenty three, you'll see that the net change in fund balance last year was a shortfall of two point four million. So basically you did three point two million overall better in twenty four than in twenty three. And then if you take the seven hundred and sixty four thousand, add it to the beginning fund balance of nineteen million five forty nine, you end with the total fund balance of twenty million three hundred thirteen thousand. Okay?
Okay.
Now, if you turn to page fifty five, we could discuss the fund balance.
Sixty five, right? Or fif- where you go fifty?
Fifty five. So this is sixty five, right?
No.
Okay. Uh this is the fund balance for all the governmental funds. Again, you have twenty twenty four on the left and twenty twenty three on the right. Um GASBEE came out with another pronouncement several years ago, number fifty four, which changed the titles of all the categories within fund balance and now we refer to them as basically buckets. Uh the first one is non-spendable. You have prepaid expenditures of five hundred and ninety four thousand. Those are basically expenditures that for the twenty twenty five year, but we're paying twenty twenty four. Most of it's probably the time. As when you get your bill and you pay it, a portion of it is applicable to twenty twenty five. So that was five hundred and ninety four thousand, pretty comparable to a hundred thousand more than the prior year. Below that, you have your restricted fund balance. And there you have debt service of a hundred and fifteen thousand. This is primarily from when you issued debt and you have it for a capital project. And the capital project has a surplus after the project is completed. If it was funded by debt, any even fund balance has to be restricted for debt service. It can be only used to pay off that debt. So debt services a hundred and fifteen thousand. Below that, you have your committed for property acquisitions, which remain the same as the prior year, eight hundred and sixty three thousand. The assigned purchases on order are all your encumbrances, which are purchase orders that were issued prior to the end of the year for which you haven't received the goods or services as of December thirty first. So that money is encumbered and it'll roll forward into next year's budget. Then you have, excuse me, your subsequent year's expenditures, the two million two hundred and fifty thousand. And if you look across last year, it's one point three million, so that's up about nine hundred and twenty thousand. Basically, you're taking two point two million, two point three million out of this total fund balance to balance the twenty five budget. Okay? And then you have your unassigned fund balance, which is sixteen million three hundred and seventy two thousand. It's comparable to the prior year, slightly less. And that's approximately sixty one percent of your twenty twenty five appropriations. Okay? So overall, the general fund and the town is in a very good position. Okay?
Good.
And if you could flip back to page forty four. I just wanted to point out the long-term liability schedule. And as you could see, it's the third number up from the bottom, the other post-employment benefit liability. The actual amount that you expended during the year is two point three million. It's a far cry from the fifty four million. Okay, so that's the amount that you focus on. That's what you put in your budget to pay the retirees' health benefits and so forth.
And that, that's what the banks look at.
What I mean?
That's what the banks would look at.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're they're looking at the actual expenditures and the budget and so forth. They're not interested in the fifty four million dollar number. Okay? Um that's it for the financials. Um is there any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
I I know that we're going to talk about the um the assignment of funds in the in the fund balance. Um I know that was in your, in your letter.
My management letter?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go over it next.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah.
Alright, everybody should have received this as well.
That's what's in the uh in your packet, yeah.
packet?
Okay.
Starting on page, in the top right-hand corner, page five of your packet. The actual management letter numbers on the bottom right.
If you refer to it, it's a managing letter, it's actually a report to those charged with governance, which will be used by the board. Um comments start on page twelve. Some of them are, as you can see on the top where it says controlled deficiencies. What that means is that there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And for the most part, this is just information for the board's management to be aware of, okay?
Plus the overview.
So the first one has to do with the special districts funds. There are two funds that had a deficit. The commercial refuse district number one and district number two, they were not significant. Last year, the uh commercial refuse with number one was twenty thousand two fifty six. And number two is two thousand eighty six, so they're up slightly from the prior year. Uh the special purpose one, that's where you have all your trusts, monies given to the town for a particular purpose. Um again, this cable consortium was in the report last year. Um I think last year was about fifteen thousand, so some money has been expended from it, which is a good thing. On page thirteen, the bankwreck affiliations. We just pointed out when they do the bankwrecks, some checks and how they get overlooked and they're asking for more than a year and we just preview the information for that, which I'm sure they're being dealt with. Um the road opening permits and a balance that's five, over five years old of almost ninety seven thousand. And the prior year was eighty nine thousand. Okay, so there are permits, more permits coming into play that basically need to be reviewed and determine what should happen to those deposits. If they're still do, you know, returnable to the contractor or if they just come into the general fund. The capital projects is a recurring comment. Um sometimes we put a capital project line schedule in the report. I know that the new projects, the new bond issues are all in line with what they should be. And some of the older projects before Rob took over, that they couldn't be identified in terms of the funding source and so forth. That's why we don't have a project line schedule on the report. But I know you're working on it. I know that I knew he was working on it and it comes from what I understand.
Yeah, it's tough. We mention this annually, but it's tough to go back because we don't have uh records going back from prior to two thousand and five. Because the accounting system, uh that's when we changed over accounting systems. And unfortunately, prior um people in that position didn't maintain uh hard copy records that we can refer back to. So um so everything for the last eighteen years is, is uh all the capital projects are accounted for. And I think it ties in all the borrowing, um uh but it's just some of these older projects that we're just having a hard time recreating the history for the projects to to tie them up.
And then we know this is with the capital projects fund itself, which is also in the financial statements. And then on page fourteen, there was one comment regarding the justice court. Uh who's been this unreconciled balance of one thousand two hundred and nine dollars for, is it fifteen years?
Eighteen.
I read it.
Eighteen. That was, that was when I started with the town and I found that balance way back then.
Right. Okay, so basically that money should just be transferred to the general fund.
You think it just takes a uh, we need a check from the uh judge's account?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um and that's it for the comments. As I said, there were no controlled deficient, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Um you mentioned earlier, you audit it very well, thanks to the finance department that was involved. And uh all the information is provided timely. And then you do, what were you, you mentioned something about a slide fund balance?
Um no, no, I I think you went over the main points, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I I don't think I have any questions. Does anyone have any questions for Alan? It's very, we speak forward, we're really well organized as always.
Okay.
Yeah. Hmm. Yeah, I'm happy to see um the fund balance numbers. Those are good, um. Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate, appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nature of commerce. Is uh everyone have a copy of the slides for the update?
Yes.
Yes.
Quickly share these here. Just a second. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna have to sharing online. But we can just go ahead and run through the slides here, I guess. Um so I'll go through the, well first, thank you for letting me come and present the uh annual financial or the first of quarter, many quarterly financial updates. Um I'll be playing the part of Rob, I guess, this evening, uh he usually does, um so.
Yes. And I I introduced you before and I welcomed you for anyone who was tuning in now.
Yes.
This is our new town controller and I, Carl Schlegel, and I wanna welcome him at his um inaugural financial update presentation.
Thank you. Um so uh I guess I'll go through the four uh main funds that we have. Um and I think you'll see uh at this point, we're about halfway through, more than halfway through the year. So we expect most uh funds would see, you know, fifty percent balance at this point uh on most of our revenues and our and our expenses. Um while we may not be right at fifty percent, we're pretty close to fifty percent on most of them. And in every case, we're in the right direction where revenues are exceeding expenses at this point. So there's nothing of major concern. Uh to first go through the general fund, um as of six thirty, we had expenses totaling forty three point six percent of the budget and revenue up at sixty four point two percent of the budget. So like I said, in the right direction where revenues are higher. Um and if you go to the next page, the sources of our expenses right now, um the main drivers of those, uh our bond principal right now is at a hundred percent. Um and that's just mainly based on the timing of uh bond repayment, uh uh schedule of bond repayments. And then right now, the other major category that's above fifty percent uh would be our recreation supplies. Um and that is uh driven by the the teen supplies and the travel camp supplies. And really, that's just a function of us getting prepared for and gearing up for uh recreation camp season um as well as other programs. So and I think you'll see on the next slide as well, our revenues are up uh above fifty percent in the recreation area as well. Uh we do have a number of notable expenses that are remaining outstanding, so not to say that just because we're not at fifty percent right now. We don't anticipate using all of our, all of our budget. Uh state retirement, we only have one payment that's been made so far, one quarterly payment. So we we do anticipate that the remaining three quarters will eat up the uh remaining amount of the budget. Uh the same with the police retirement as well. Um and then our workers' comp insurance payment is outstanding. That was just approved at the uh last board meeting. Um and the payment just was not made as of six thirty when this report was run. So uh that will be in the third quarter report. On the next slide is, it comes to revenues. As I mentioned, the recreation programs right now, we're at about seventy six percent of total budget with the camps actually exceeding budget uh at six hundred and ninety five thousand. Um and that again is a matter of timing. Most of our camp revenues come in uh the March-April timeframe. And uh we are, you know, in the thick of camp season right now. Uh then, as Alan mentioned, building permits uh traditionally have been a strong point um within our revenues within the general fund. They remain strong this year. We're at about eighty percent uh as of six thirty of our total uh annual budget. And interest earnings, uh which uh I think you see from our financial statements last year as well, uh exceeded the budgeted revenues. Uh Rob and the team have been very good about uh wisely using and wisely investing the uh money that we do have on hand uh in uh the near-class accounts, which uh get us a sizable return compared to what we would otherwise be seeing in most, you know, money market accounts, so. Um and then.
And I ju- I just wanna say one thing about the rec programs and the camps exceeding budget expectations. And I think that reflects the fact that we have, you know, increased our capacity as much as is possible right now. And you know, we are making good on our promise to enroll as many, as many campers as possible.
They are exceedingly popular programs.
Yes, and we will continue. They're still highly in demand and we still have more um demand than we can accommodate. But we're continuing, continuing to expand that capacity.
Yeah, and and just, just because the revenues exceed the budget doesn't mean that um, you know. And and just just because the revenues exceed the budget doesn't mean that, um, you know, we're turning a profit or anything off of it either. We will see higher expenses because of that. You have not seen any uh payroll expenses as it relates to summer camp employment yet. Uh, those numbers will go up because with the increased enrollment, we've had to increase the number of uh part-time counselors that we've hired as well. So, this is not to say that this will be a surplus in any way, um, your. The timing of revenues and expenses just do not match up perfectly, so.
Yeah.
Um, and then the large categories outstanding for general fund revenues, uh remaining for the year, sales tax, we've only received one quarterly distribution at this point. It was about on target with where our twenty twenty four first quarter distribution was. Um, and it puts us on target to hit our budgeted amount, um, we increased the budget uh from last year's amount where we had a surplus. Um, and then the mortgage tax year to date uh is exceedingly higher than last year's first payment. But, um, given the sort of uh market forces that we're seeing right now, there's been a real inventory problem, I would be reluctant to guess as to where the. The rest comes out, um, but uh the first the first payment was um a pleasant surprise.
Yeah, I think I'm cautiously optimistic. The the first payment's a little higher than I think it has been the last year or so.
Yeah.
And uh summer's a traditionally better selling season, so I I would think we're gonna be up.
Yeah, prices have not been an issue, it has been more inventory, I think, but I'm optimistic that we'll remain on target for that. Uh, moving to the next slide, um, the highway fund, um, again, you'll see that our expenses are below fifty percent at this point, thirty seven percent of the total budget. Um, but our revenue uh is at about eighty percent of the uh budget year to date. When it comes to the expenses, the sources exceeding fifty percent at this point, again, bond principal will be a reoccurring theme here, that's just based on the timing of when our payments are due. Um, overtime within the highway fund uh is at right now at about seventy seven percent. Um, and that is largely driven by snow removal overtime in the earlier part of this year. If you'll recall, in January and February, we got hit with a couple uh more impactful snowstorms, uh and they happened to hit uh on weekends. Or holidays when we'd be paying double time as opposed to just your standard time and a half or even just straight time during regular workday. Um, the good news is that seasonally, uh, January, February and March seem to be the time that this overtime historically has been accrued mostly, so. We're hopeful that we won't see any major storms come uh early this year and that we should remain okay in this category. And the same with salt, um, right now, we're at about eighty six percent of budget, but again, we do most of our salt purchases uh within the first half of the year. Um, really, we're just topping off within uh December if we need to uh backfill, but uh for the most part, that is uh just a timing issue. Uh, expenses outstanding, uh road paving program, we have not, um, I think we're approving the program.
Approving this evening.
Approving this evening the road paving program, so you'll see uh that coming through and we're tis the season for that, so we have not done it yet. Um, and then another reoccurring theme, state retirement, only one payment there, and workers' comp. Uh, moving into the revenue, um, again, interest earnings, uh, we are already above our budgeted uh target for interest earnings within the highway fund. Um, that is again due to the use of the NY class vehicle for most of our deposits. Um, which just brings in a significant amount of uh revenue for us. And uh, snow and ice removal, uh, at this point, I believe is state aid, Rob?
State and county aid, yeah.
State and county aid, um, that we anticipate continuing to uh come in, I think that's the first payment, did we get a second payment on that one?
It's sporadic and they they do reconciliations versus uh prior year, which I think it was a little bit off last year, so this is the money we received from the state. And the county for plowing state and county roads within the town boundaries. Um, there's uh, they always estimate it and then uh they'll do a reconciliation at the end and we're paid based on like inches of snow per mile of road. Et cetera, so uh uh we should get a couple more payments this year.
Yeah. Um, and then the final category that we have no um actualized revenue in yet is uh chips, because we have not um done the paving yet, so. Once we undertake that, we will get the reimbursement.
The chips I'll point out too, the budget budgeted number is four twenty five, uh, I think we actually approved at a prior meeting. Uh, some additional funding, there's there's four different sources with the chips, there's pave New York and uh extreme winter recovery. Can't remember the fourth in addition to chips, so uh you'll see we're gonna approve the road paving tonight in the amount of uh, I think it's one point. Uh, one point five three million, and that will correspond to what uh what our revenue looks like for the year.
It's probably just me missing a revenue line, so.
Yeah, the revenue and the expenses will match there, so.
Yeah. Um, any questions on the highway fund?
Alright.
Uh, refuse fund, uh, this is uh more of a surprising one to take a look at, our expenses so far year to date are about forty one percent. And yet our revenue is at a full ninety five percent of the budget so far. Um, digging into that, again, the expenses, bond principal, just the timing issue. Uh, the remaining expenses, uh transfer site charges, which would just be our uh ongoing charges for the removal of waste. And then state retirement and workers' comp insurance. So again, just because we are at forty percent does not mean we don't anticipate using the rest. When it comes to revenue though, uh, the compost and mulch sales, we are uh at one hundred sixty five percent of the budget, so way over budget in our compost and mulch sales. Very popular uh category around here it seems, but also uh pretty much done for the year at this point, so. Um, these revenues uh are, we're not likely to see a overabundance of revenue in this account, we're pretty much there at this point. And uh yard waste will probably continue to see a little bit more fill up the rest of the year, but again, just enough to fill up what we had budgeted for in the refuse fund. And moving on finally to the water fund, uh, with expenses of about thirty two percent of our budget and revenue at about forty percent of our budget. It's the first fund that we um are fully under fifty percent in both categories. Um, and that is again probably uh. Mostly attributable to seasonal uh issues, we have not reached high water usage season yet, so because of that, we have not done water billing. And we have also not had to treat as much water yet because we have not provided as much water. Um, so if you go into the water fund expenses right now, the the drivers are your bond principal. And we have seen some overtime uh within the uh within the water fund, which I think was due mostly to staffing. Uh, in the first quarter that we've uh since hired and.
Yeah, some of the overtime there are water main breaks, which we've had quite a number of, so.
We did have a number of those.
Yeah, that's where a lot of the overtime comes in.
That seemed to be mostly in uh Q one, maybe early Q two, and it's petered off uh last month.
Yeah, that's a a result of the freeze thaw freeze process, so every time the uh, I think they call it heave. Uh, the road kind of heaves and and the uh the mains kind of, it moves around as the ground thaws and freezes again, so. Uh, unfortunately, uh Carl's right though, that's a pretty much a first quarter expense.
Um. Uh, as it comes to uh remaining expenses, we uh as we see water usage increase, we anticipate seeing the uh treatment chemicals increase as well. Uh, we will still have the payments to biolia for operation and again, state retirement. And then when it comes to revenues, uh, as I mentioned, the billing is only through May year to date, we have not yet booked the uh the June billings that we had. And September through November are historically our largest months when it comes to billing, so we are, you know, not anticipating, hopefully by third quarter, we have a better idea, but still even then. Uh, we haven't hit peak season yet, uh when we do the third quarter update. Um, as of right now, interest earnings are again the uh sole source exceeding fifty percent of the budget, we've hit our full budgeted amount at eighty nine thousand five hundred. Um, and uh despite not being in full uh usage season, we still have gotten some uh sizable consumption revenues. Uh, when it comes year over year, general sales in the amount of uh one point six million. Uh, across the town, Mount Pleasant billings, uh one one hundred sixty thousand and IBM property is about two hundred twenty thousand, so. Uh, historically speaking, pretty much on target with those, um, looking okay. Uh, I my crystal ball is not clear enough to see how wet this summer will be, but uh hopefully this spring is not any. Uh, indication as to ongoing weather patterns and uh. Uh, we see some additional usage here, but again, an area where just if we see additional revenues, we'll see the additional expenses for treatment too. So, nothing glaring at this point.
Great, thank you very much Carl, so what I can see in general is that I'm glad our revenues are exceeding our expenses and the numbers just seem to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Overall reflect where we are seasonally, so it all make, we are where we should be.
Yes, and no surprises lurking in the in the corners as far as we can tell. Uh, the only things that came out of state budget um seem to be positive variances, although not particularly large ones either. Uh, the uh elimination of our paying the uh MTA uh commuter tax was welcome, but only uh. About fifteen hundred dollars every two weeks that we were paying in that, so dropping the bucket comparatively.
Great, uh, does anyone have any questions for Carl? No, thank you very much Carl, appreciate appreciate all the work and the presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I like good news like this.
So, uh, I have a question.
I like good news.
Lena, I have a question for you. Can I make um an executive decision to switch a presentation that we have.
Yes, you may.
For the town meeting and switch it to the work session at this point, okay, um. I'm going to, Rob, can we um go out, I believe that our county executive is here, so I will. Um, invite him in at this point, even though we're in our work session, so. Okay. Yeah, I knew it was something. So, at this point, everyone, I would like to give a a huge shout out and welcome. To our Westchester County Executive Ken Jenkins, who we are very honored to have here with us today. Um, I know Ken, you were um scheduled at our town board meeting, we're in our work session, but we are as usual woefully behind. And it and everyone is waiting to hear from you, so we will, no, it will, you do not want to wait through all of our, I promise you.
It will be a terrible.
That's very kind and generous, but.
I promise you, we are very honored to have you here, Ken, uh, I I just want to say that our county executive Ken Jenkins, in his. Short period of time in his tenure as county executive has accomplished so much for Westchester and he's been a tremendous partner to us in the town of Newcastle and I know. To all the municipalities in Westchester and he's done so much, I will not take your thunder and talk about all the things you've accomplished, but um.
No.
You've done so much to improve the lives of uh your constituents in in the county, whether it's in the environment. Um, quality of life and so many other um issues, infrastructure, et cetera. And I know that Ken, you're always present here in our town, I know that you've been to every single fire inspection. Since I've been on the board, Millwood, um, you know, and Chabukwa fire inspections, I just want people to know that you are always here and you are everywhere throughout Westchester. Um, what you do and your presence for everyone is such um a model of leadership. And we're lucky to have you and thank you for taking the time out of your very busy schedule to be with us tonight.
So first, thank you so much, no.
So.
So first, supervisor, it is awesome, always awesome to be here with you and the town board, um, and I'm sorry for breaking in work session, cause you know, we would wait just normally, so thank you for the um opportunity. Cause you're like, you don't want to wait that long. But the reality is is that um the the town here in Newcastle, certainly under your leadership and certainly the whole town. New administrator, you know, Rob's blowing blowing his own path now, making his own things happen, um, we are trying to continue to be doing the work with all of you. And continuing to make sure that we are managing from a county perspective with all of our local partners and it that hasn't changed, that we have the look, that we're um. Siblings, we don't have a bigger government, we just have a bigger government that's brother and a sister, so we're gonna continue to do that work here uh with the town. Um, traveling with me tonight here is um Copper Crane, um, who is our assistant director of intergovernmental services. Copper, Copernicus, uh, is the one that you normally talk to.
Oh, that's who you are.
Yeah.
I get so many emails right now.
Uh, yeah, yes, Cop Copernicus, I do that.
Which I appreciate.
Um, and and then that's part of the work that we're gonna continue to do, is to make sure that we're listening to the things that are happening here in the town. Um, and doing the best that we can with all of our partners at the state and even the federal level to make sure that we're trying to make a difference um every day, so for us. Um, in this particular challenging time, you know, we wanted to come by and just give you a quick update to where we are, I mean, we're halfway through the year. Um, and it's been a challenging year, um, and a challenging year, cause whenever there's a new administration, all of us whenever we got elected, um. It's a difference, right, um, it's, you know, people expect things are gonna be different. Fortunately for us, the stability because of serving seven years under um our ninth county executive and our congressman in the sixteenth district, my congressperson, um, and you know, George Latimer. Um, you you get a chance to be able to have stability and we manage with competence and we always try to do that with civility, no matter what part of the county. So we're gonna continue to do that work, um, our budget is two point five billion dollars, um, you know. Sorry for making your eyes light up there, um, two point five billion dollars, we have forty five hundred employees. Um, and and certainly, um, we went through the first quarter this year and it looks like we have a twenty five million dollar um deficit in sales tax. And part of that is because of the chaos and confusion at the federal level. We try to work around that, so whatever the rules are, we just try to manage through them, understand how to make a difference. Um, I spent some time this morning, um, with our hospitals, um, in Westchester W M C Health. Um, and our coalition for quality healthcare throughout the county, and we had both of our congresspeople. Um, there this morning as well as most of the state legislators in the region, the Hudson Valley region, um, that um, Westchester Medical Center um does work with. So we had our friends from Rockland and we had some folks from Ulster County because they have facilities in all three of those places, um, and we are gonna continue to do that work. Our first quarter report said sales tax went up twenty percent in January. Up right before um inauguration day and then it went down ten percent in February and down twenty percent in March. Um, we were waiting for our numbers for May, um, that was not going in a positive direction, our fingers crossed that we had a great Memorial Day weekend. Um, you know, we all had great weekend this weekend for the Fourth of July and Independence Day from a a weather perspective. Um, and we're trying to make sure all of our residents feel, again, we were all standing up and fighting for the best things to happen for them, you know, partnership. Um, we were able to sit down um with with Copper and Harry, I think, came up with us when we sat down with you supervisor and talked about some of the things that were important for the town. And whether that is trying to remove roadblocks, um, I spend a lot of time and our team, I'm Joe McDonald and we saw it's man, all entire team spends a lot of time. Removing roadblocks done to make a difference so that you in the town can do the things that you're trying to do and whether that's a partnership and making sure that when we're doing construction on the road. That we're partnering with you and saying, oh, let's not really destroy that road twice, right? Because the the people, the residents of the town, um, would be kind of upset about that, right?
That saved us a lot of money and a lot of time, really appreciate that.
Well, but 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 again, that's the kind of partnership that we need to continue to do, again, to remove roadblocks, talk with our partners and whether that's Senator Harkam. Or uh Assemblyman Verdi, um, to make sure that we're making things happen and removing things out the way and letting you all do the great work that you do together. Uh, we we just saw our um crime statistics, uh, again, the major crime including um, what old theft and all those kind of things that were going on an upswing have come down. That doesn't mean that's a partnership, that we don't take credit for crime being down, cause we're not gonna take blame for when it's up. But working with, uh, when we work with our local law enforcement here in the town, in the county and partnering together with the state. It gets to make a difference and making sure all of our residents feel safe and secure no matter where they are, um, and with things that they need. Government, as we all understand, at the end of the day, it's supposed to be providing services and whether those services are making sure that the road and the snow is clear, the garbage is picked up. All those things that happen, but they don't happen without the level of partnership that we've been able to do together. So, where are we going for the next few months? Um, we're gonna continue um to work and monitor the things that are happening in Washington, we took the the bill, um, the reconciliation bill that was just adopted. We have seven hundred million dollars of impact for the county directly, um, from um different services that we have. Um, we've been able to fight against and stand up against what we have for our Immigrant Protection Act, which some people re- recognize, I mean, certainly town board members recognize here. Um, that we have had that in place since two thousand and eighteen in um President Trump one point O, President Biden and now President Trump two point O. It's the same thing and we work with our federal law enforcement partners in criminal activities that has never changed. It's the same thing and we work with our federal law enforcement partners in criminal activities, that has never changed. Um it's not gonna be changing anytime soon, that uh um law enforcement talks to each other, um when they're trying to investigate crimes. And that's normal and it should be. Um we don't do the federal government's job as far as um civil um immigration law, that's what the federal government gets paid a lot of money to do and we let them do their work. Um and as a matter of fact, we had a conversation today in our um Board of Legislators, where our Department of Correction folks came in to um you know, Commissioner Joe Spano and his team came in to remind people that um the Immigration and Customs Enforcement, um the ICE folks, they know how to do the work with judicial warrants, we have had two over the last week and everything worked perfectly. So we understand what the rules are, we act, make sure to follow the laws and make sure things move forward together. So, that was the kind of things that we are gonna continue to work with. Um we know we had in our nationally credited and award winning park system over this weekend, we only had thirty five thousand people show up and play there over the the last few days, I know uh the the people in the town love to come over to the other side of the county um to participate in as maybe a once a year bit, um but we appreciate everyone doing that. Um on the third, we had our Pensacola Dam concert, we usually have twenty thousand um people, but there was a little bit of rain that day. And that's something that just a tad bit with the thunderstorms that we might get tonight. And we're gonna continue to work with the town and all of the neighbors around here to try to deal with flooding and mitigation of those um challenges. We he also, my fingers are crossed nowadays in front of the Board of Legislators that we're finally gonna get the E V charges um that the town applied for, I think almost two years ago now, right?
A while.
That's scary that I know that. Almost two years ago.
And Ken, that would be great.
Uh well, well, we're it it is gonna be great, but but because, um and and I know some of you are lawyers here, so we're gonna be kind. And and say that the law department was saying that they wanted to wait till all of the um municipalities that were participating could come together, so we would have that in our bond act, um to be able to move forward with, we have a lease that you all have gotten. And hopefully, um the the town attorney is taking a look at it and everything, our fingers are crossed, but I believe the Board of Legislators will be moving forward with that at the next meeting and that will wrap up at least that part of it, so that we can move forward and get those um E V charging stations that the that the town wanted to do, um out and about.
Yeah, and that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's an organized way to do it.
You you know something, um the 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 challenge again is that when it was one municipality, it would be one thing, but you know, out of the forty five municipalities that we have in the county, um someone didn't have their paperwork done, et cetera, didn't have the identification of the locations um done. And our bond council said you have to have that in the the bond act and we worked with our team to change that. To say, let's just come up with a framework and then we can make these changes along the way. Um we've been very successful in working with the the um state government in housing and community renewal, um in doing some things for local preferences. As far as affordable housing is concerned, we've been able to get that done, because every town, every city, every village, every hamlet in Westchester County wants to make sure that their local residents can participate in in some of the activities and whether they are young folks or our seniors that wanna retire in place, how do we make that happen when we know that we have affordable housing challenges to do that? We have been able to work with H C R, um Governor Hoagul and Commissioner Ruth Lemos Natus, um to be able to do a percentage of those with local preference. That makes the job easier for you when you're trying to explain this to the community, how community residents can be participants in those activities, so we're gonna keep working on those things and listening to all of you, um to try to make sure that they're making a difference. Um like I said, my fingers are crossed, I know that again, the challenges are um severe for us in in the New York State area and certainly from some of the things that are coming with us at the federal government level, but we're not um afraid of that. We're we're looking at that challenge of working together with all of our partners throughout Westchester. And we continue to understand that for Westchester, we almost feel like we live in a bubble, when we look around that we work together with everyone. We get to government and we do government work, we don't go party work, it doesn't matter where we are. And we have some flooding issues that we need to take care of, um you may have seen that we announced the first project that New York State did. Um when we had our D E C Commissioner, um um down here, um Amanda Leighton, that came down here um with Kelly, um I'm gonna miss her name, but so but they came down to announce the first set of of environmental bond act projects, which was twenty one million dollars, they mapped the entire county. So other projects will be coming out and our fingers are crossed, cause I'm pretty sure that there's one that is gonna impact here in the town, right? Um and with some of our colleagues and that'll be helpful, um as we try to address the um flooding challenges that happen from our streams and our rivers and that kind of thing. So, I'm thank you for giving me an opportunity to say hi first, hello.
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 I'm looking for, I'm not I'm not thinking I'm gonna do the dunk tank this year, cause Chris Burdick, oh, I know, I know that some of you are disappointed about that, right?
I think that that's in September, so you have time to to change your mind.
I I, well, I got time to rethink that, right, you know, to 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 work on my my skills. Um and and I'm not Chris Burdick that has the suit that he has for the dunk tank, I came last year with with uh with the bathing suit, cause you know, I was not prepared to be dunked in a suit. But the the truth is that so many things happen here in the town and we're gonna keep doing that partnership together with with all of us. Um working with our Human Rights Commission to make sure that we're recognizing and respecting everybody um in our community and make sure everyone understands that Westchester means everyone. Um and we're gonna stand up for everyone's rights to make sure their voices are heard. And whether it's a pride, um a pride festival, or whether it is a Juneteenth festival, or any of the other thirteen that we have down in the county. Um it's Italian heritage this weekend, by the way, uh at Pensacola Dam on Sunday and Arab heritage on Sunday as well in Ridgewood Park. So, come on down, we're gonna have lots of food, but it's always best to come back up to the town and get some food here too.
Absolutely.
I'm happy to take questions from any of of the board members, Madam Supervisor.
Okay, anyone uh with questions for Ken?
No, thank you for being with us tonight.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Oh, we're gonna make it easy on him.
Oh, wait, uh.
Oh, Ken, you know, you you are doing so much, um thank you for coming, I we know how busy you are and how much you do for us and it's really an honor to have you here to take the time to to be with us, um. Yeah, there are so many, so many areas where you've made improvements already, so I really look forward to you know, what's ahead for us and working with you towards those goals and uh really, really appreciate all that you do.
Well, well, again, it's the partnership, you know, teamwork creates the dream work and the truth is for us, our job is to um to get roadblocks out of your way. And whether that's working with the the fire departments, the volunteer fire departments that you have, um and being able to go and do the inspections and shake your head a lot and take out the white glove, right? But but the truth is, those things make a difference in how the quality of life is for everyone, so again, we're happy to be here. Um we're gonna sit down and listen to some more work session and thank you for not asking that many questions, you know.
Hey, I I actually have one for you, Ken.
Okay.
You started out talking about hospitals in Westchester. Are you worried at all about the future of the Westchester hospitals in terms of what's going on at the federal level?
Um absolutely, and and when the the again, you know, when you take a piece of um of the system, in our case, the Medicaid portions of our work, um were being utilized creatively because in most of the hospital situations, um you don't get reimbursed at the right rate. For the the cost for the service is much more than they get reimbursed. Um and what happens with with Medicaid, a lot of times those folks were getting um they were getting services and insured that way, because you stop people from showing up at the door with the most expensive care possible, right? You don't want someone going to the emergency room and Senator Stuart Cousins pointed out today, you don't want the people that don't have um insurance showing up walking in the door with stage four something, right? Because people will hold out and then they're going into the emergency room. So the hospital and our hospital systems, our nursing homes, our care facilities, um our clinics that are out there, if they don't get even that reimbursement they were getting before, they're hit, getting hit twice, cause they're gonna go to the emergency room where it's the most expensive care possible and they're not even gonna get reimbursed the little bit amount that they were getting reimbursed for before. So that's that's a challenge and what we all should be doing is trying to figure out creative ways of making sure that we're delivering services. So, um we have six billion dollars in the state, um in this district, in the seventeenth congressional district, it's twenty three million dollars of impact um that the the changes will have, um and that is not something that can get made up. Um as we point out, for us in the county, it's seven hundred million dollars of federal funding impact, we can't fix that, right? I can't tax seven hundred million dollars of things, for us, um the one percent tax increase is five and a half million dollars, so that math doesn't work. So at the end of the day, it's really simple, either reduce services, um or you raise revenue or raise taxes. And we've been working hard with all of our our partners, including the town, to try to manage that part. Um but yes, we are um terrified about what does that mean?
Mm-hmm.
You know, people not getting services and then going to the emergency room where they have to get served under the state law, it's not something that's on, it's a court case, it's not something that's like, oh yeah, we just wanna do it, cause we're really nice people, no, we're we're not really nice people. Um at the end, it's the the rule that we have to do, so how does that work? How do we take our medical center, um you may have seen in Rockland County for W M C Health, they got from their I D A about a hundred and fifty million dollars um to the Westchester Medical Center for working capital and that's just trying to catch them up. And and we have in front of us, um that for our local development corporation, two hundred and seventy million for the Westchester Medical Center. So, half a billion dollars is what the two counties are gonna put in to try to keep the medical center afloat. And being able to move forward, it's not sustainable to do that, uh without having our federal government partners help out. So again, I think that that's the 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 challenges, um that we're gonna have to continue to work with and again, we're gonna work with that together. Um I talk with our nonprofit partners, um and say to them, it's like, hey, we gotta work together to get through the challenges of the time and it's okay, right? We're gonna pull our belts a little bit tighter, um we're not gonna be able to do as creative and new things as we were trying to do before. But I think that when we work together, we're gonna come up with these solutions and um again, it's gonna be a little bit painful. Um some of the great organizations, some of the great health facilities that we have around, they're not gonna be able to survive. Um and that's that's not trying to be, um you know, hyperbole and be all scared, no, we're not trying to do that, we gotta like figure this stuff out um together and that's what we've been able to do, um from a county's perspective, to be able to work with our partners, both at the state
Yeah.
and our local level to be able to take care of the people that we need to take care of, so yes, it is something that is uh scary.
Mm-hmm.
Um understanding that we have um a lot of impact. Mental health services, most people don't realize that most of the mental health services are funded somehow through Medicaid. Um and again, we we keep having all of those challenges, but we gotta work through them together.
That was gonna be my next question, you know, the mental health services in the county.
So, also, you you know, you you know, uh we have Project Alliance here in Westchester County, uh was something that we developed um after the the George Floyd and uh uh police reform and reinvention things that were happening. Um we created a program called Project Alliance, where we have trained both police um officers and dispatchers to um to divert mental health calls when it's possible to the medical professionals. And then we have regional setups, if you're in part of one of the regions, we have six throughout the county, where the police are able to uh pick up the phone and reach out to mental health pro- um professionals, um for the mobile crisis response team to be able to address those, so um you know, um you you all know my dad was a police officer, so I know that we've asked our police to do so many things. Um but being mental health professionals shouldn't be one of them, we have professionals that do that, so that was a calls that can be diverted. Um so we continue to to do that work, um we're trying to expand on that particular program, because one of the things that we have found is that um a lot of times when someone's in crisis, someone around them sees them going through crisis and they only have a call to nine one one to make and that's usually at a bad time, so we wanna make sure that um people and families have an opportunity to make a call earlier and directly to the mobile crisis team, so we're trying to do that, we'll see if we're gonna be able to pull that off um in the budget without increasing taxes, I'm not quite sure if we're gonna be able to have a full blown program, but that is something that we're working on um with our state partners and utilizing some of our opioid settlement money um to be able to do that, so we figure that we have an opportunity to to create a kind of a program where family members or friends can actually make a call to get someone the help that they need before we get all um police involved, cause the police should be involved if it's a matter of safety and security for a person or for someone else. Um but if it's someone that's just hasn't taken their meds and that kind of thing and that a family sees that, they'll be able to make a call to someone and say, can we get assistance? Um we did additional things that everyone, uh by the way, the town and every municipality in the county's civil service system, cause we're just a regional hub for that, um that we put in a new um a a new office for employee assistance that everyone's entitled to utilize, we're working on something for our first responders, um because our first responders, um they're not superheroes or anything like that, they're just great human beings and sometimes they see awful things as we saw in the Tukani, right? And how do we help them, um they don't wanna necessarily call the employee assistance line, cause they don't trust it, cause they think someone's going to um to give out and divulge their secrets and that kind of thing and one, they won't, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't try to figure that out, so we're doing that with our first responders, especially um more of the firefighter side versus the um the police side, not that the police don't need that as well, um they see awful things.
Yeah.
Right? And you know, again, with the accident on Tukani, there was, you know, just horrific, six people, it's like, oh my gosh, so how can we do that? And some of your um your your um firefighters and ambulance corps responded to that, we wanna make sure to do that. Again, those are the kind of things that people just don't get a chance to see and that's where Medicaid dollars and other things are being created to come by, so thank you for that question, though.
Yeah, and and
I'm so glad to hear that.
And I just wanna say, you know, the first responders here, uh ambulance and fire, they're volunteers.
Yes.
This is not a paid force, um so, yeah, so so good that um you know, they get the help they need.
And 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 we try to do this and that was with partnership um with the volunteer ambulance corps, um for their for their association for the state um that they came to us and said, hey, can we do this thing and we'll keep working through that, again, cause they're volunteers, right? And and they're volunteers and when the bell rings, they're out there trying to do the things to help and assist people, we gotta figure out ways to assist them as well. And again, people don't get a chance to see that part, um that when we're working to try to figure out a solution that they're like, oh wait, no one ever thought of it that way, why do we need a separate employee assistance program for police? Every uh graduation that I stand up for for police or fire, we have a fire career fire one that's coming this week, we did a volunteer firefighter one about two weeks ago to catch up, um and they say, look, you loved ones that are here, I'm talking to you all that are watching that are here for your loved ones that are here, they're not gonna, they're gonna miss something, they're not gonna be able to come to a dinner, they're gonna miss a graduation, they're gonna miss a birthday party because they're out handling an emergency, um but you're gonna see something first, pick up the phone and use the assistance that we have available for all of them, because we want them to come home every night and we want everyone to be able to feel um as safe and secure as possible, but we wanna give people the help that they need. And for our volunteers, you know, we have the hero program where the county provides additional assistance as far as um um college tuition and that kind of thing, so we're gonna keep doing that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So.
That sounds great.
And also, on another note, Ken, I want you to know that I'm going to be giving an update on the um the Con Ed rate increase case before the Public Service Commission and uh for the thirty nine or thirty eight municipalities that have formed a consortium and are bringing a case before um the P A, you know, to to object to the rate increase. And I know that Westchester has also um
Intervene.
In in is a separate intervenor as well, so um I will be giving an update to that, but I just wanna to thank Westchester County for um becoming an intervenor in that as well.
Um absolutely, it was a question.
Because you know, it it all goes to the cost of living here, we are one of the highest taxed areas in the country and um you know, there's a lot that we feel we're powerless against, but we actually aren't, so um I'll be giving an update on that and I just wanna highlight that the county is also doing a lot of work in that area.
Absolutely, and I'm tonight was um in Cortland, um the Public Service Commission is in Cortland tonight, um from six o'clock tonight. And tomorrow, we'll be in the county center um to take direct testimony from Public Service Commission, we asked, um based on our our um municipal leaders saying, you gotta do something, so but the truth is, um eleven point four percent and thirteen point three um percent increases in in um electric, eleven point four for gas. You know, everyone's shaking their heads, like it is unconscionable and it's not the the service, it's not the um service itself, it's not the providing of the gas or electric, it's the delivery charges. And yes, we understand that there's investments that need to be made, none of us think that that's not different, we all believe in climate change here in Westchester, alright? And global climate change and when now we have to make differences and you know, we have beautiful homes and have wires in the air, we gotta bury those, et cetera, et cetera, E V charging. But um the 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 uh if I looked correct. But um the 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 uh if I looked correctly, um the president of Con Ed made seventeen million dollars last year, alright? Not cool, alright? No one's saying you shouldn't make money doing that, but again, we have to look around, you know, seventeen million dollars um in stockholders, et cetera. That's the conversations that we need to continue to have. So we're all looking forward to hearing your update um I'm supervisor, and certainly, we're gonna keep fighting as hard as we can.
Okay, well, thank you so much, thank you so much, Ken.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, right?
Good to see you.
And uh we understand totally if you need to leave midway.
Who doesn't sit on his side though?
Okay. Alright, thank you so much. Alright. Okay, so I will get to that update. So I just want to remind everyone, I know that we went over this a bit um a few weeks ago. But this Con Ed uh rate increase proposal follows a twenty percent rate hike over the past three years already. So they have asked for an eleven point four percent increase in electric rates, a twenty-five point one percent increase in residential delivery charges, a thirteen point three percent increase in gas rates, and a nineteen point one percent increase in gas delivery rates. So as you know, uh Westchester, there's bit, there's a Westchester consortium of thirty-eight municipalities that are now represented by a special utility council. So the parties held their first session to discuss a schedule for settlement talks. Um the schedule places a deadline on the submission of a settlement agreement, which would be called a joint proposal uh to the commission by the end of September twenty twenty-five. Um there was an evidentiary hearing scheduled to begin in July, but because of this um settlement proposal that has been postponed. If no settlement is reached, then the evidentiary hearings will begin. If a settlement is reached, then the evidentiary hearings on the reasonableness of the settlement will be held instead. So an initial settlement offer from Con Ed is scheduled uh for July ninth, twenty twenty-five. So on our side, what our main points are going to be is to emphasize how high Con Ed rates are compared to the rates charged in neighboring counties. Um number two, to raise questions about whether they might be charged, they might charge more than our neighboring counties because our rates are based largely upon the cost of operations in New York City. So our area of Westchester is lumped into New York City. And thirdly, we will emphasize how high these rates have been going up uh uh at a much faster rate than the cost of living. Um fourth, Con Ed's capital expenditures for electric reliability are virtually all within New York City. And we would like the commission to take a long, hard look at whether Westchester resident rates should be adjusted due to the disparity in investments between um New York City and Westchester. So they have, at this point, their original rate request for electric and delivery cha- electric charges is the same. They have lowered by just a bit um their increased request for the gas gas rates, but it's still an over twenty percent increase in gas delivery charge rates. So um the percentage increase compared to the rate of inflation for the um for the rates overall, I'm not gonna go through each one, but overall, the previous twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five rates have been a thirty-three point eight percent increase, which is more than double the G D P or the C P I. For their proposed rates, uh we would see a more than five times faster increase than the G D P or the C P I. Um there are a lot of details here, so I'm not gonna go over. But in terms of infrastructure investment, uh one hundred percent of Manhattan's infrastructure is underground, and over eighty percent of all of New York City's infrastructure is underground. And by contrast, seventy percent of Westchester's infrastructure is above ground. Um New York City costs are much higher because of density and because of property taxes. And all the indices point to New York City as being the driving force in the high rates. So we want to propose that the uh Public Service Commission take a hard look at the disparities between the costs of service in New York City and the investments being proposed for New York City as compared to Westchester. And um take a look at apportioning the costs in a much fairer way. So in the past, um Westchester has not been represented in this way, so we're all very hopeful that the P S C will take a look at these huge disparities and uh give some form of relief to to Westchester County. So that's my update for now. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Thank you. No.
Can you just clarify that July ninth, that's something that Con Ed's coming to present to the consortium?
Okay. They're going to present their proposal to the P S C.
Oh, okay. So is that connected to what Ken said was go- it's not connected to what's going on um tomorrow?
Uh they are taking public testimony.
Because. Okay, but that's separate from.
Right, so they're it's it's public comment. And they're going to different areas to take public comments.
Right, I understand.
So that's a different, that's a different process. This is um
So it's it's completely unrelated to the to the proposal that we're hoping to hear tomorrow?
Well, I don't know how unrelated. I mean, they're taking public comment, and I'm not sure how they're meshing what they hear from the public with what their ultimate decisions will be, but um
I I guess.
But Con Ed is coming before the P S C with a proposal. And it's it's just a matter of whether that settlement
Right, if the if the proposal, if the settlement is, if it goes awry, I think the public testimony could then be used to kind of
Okay. Okay, so the presentation of this is not at the event tomorrow. That's just gonna be made, that's gonna be public separate?
Further. No, no, not at all. Right, the um the case before the P S C is not public.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, understood.
And and that's why we have special counsel
Yeah.
to have representation.
Okay, so.
Um whereas I think in the past, they promised Westchester a lot of concessions, and so I I, you know, I don't know all the details of what happened in the past, but
Yeah.
it was always felt that they were providing enough concessions to Westchester so that
But I think the bottom line is
we didn't need representation, but.
But the bottom line is, we're not going to hear tomorrow. This is something that's between Con Ed and the Public Service Commission.
Oh, tomorrow are the are
Um what they're talking about the settlement.
Tomorrow are the
Right.
Oh, right.
Okay, that's that's just what I wanted to make sure I understood.
Right, that's part of the the private case.
Got it.
Okay.
It's coincidental they're both tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Okay then, alright. Um and now we're going to have an update on what is going on with Getney Pond. Rob, do you wanna start us off?
Jared, Dennis, do you wanna join us? You can sit next to Lena there. So I I will just start off. So um you know, the situation in Getney Pond, we first saw this last year. Uh we had some growth there and uh that exploded over the summer last year. We had high temperatures, uh low rain totals and uh and uh so we saw this explode over the summer. We started working on it then. Uh we engaged some contractors and we got some quotes. We had to go through uh a process where we have mapped the lake out because there's a, there's two components to this. One is we're going to treat the pond uh with a uh an herbicide to kind of knock back the growth. And then we will end up removing some of the uh organic material from the pond. In, I think we're gonna do this in the fall. Uh once we take this matter out of the lake, it's gotta dry out. Um it's gonna probably smell. We didn't wanna do this through the time that people are using the park primarily in the summertime. So we're gonna wait till the late fall to do that and then dispose of that.
Yeah.
So um what's happened recently, uh due to the, we haven't had as much rainfall lately. The temperatures were close to a hundred, if not exceeded a hundred. And uh we saw the growth kind of explode in Getney Park pond, so uh I'll let Dennis take over and and talk about where we are right now.
And I just wanna say overall, and Dennis, you know, is is going to give us his expert um opinion and details, but I want people to understand overall that there was a really important process that had to take place from the examination of the material to the determination of the best way to handle it. And then ultimately, to having to wait for the D E C to approve of what we were going to do. And that was a long waiting period. And I think that people have not necessarily um focused on that. And so we ju- had have just received the approval to go to go ahead from the D E C.
July third, the permit was dated, so Dennis.
Yes.
We have Ike joining us online as well.
Alright.
Right, so um yeah, it's interesting to, you wanna summarize D E C so administratively uh the way this worked out. Um because January first of this year, D E C, you know, changed some of their wetlands regulations. Therefore, this activity was now regulated under the uh Freshwater Wetlands Act. And you know, uh I'm sure they anticipated that they weren't truly prepared for the increase in regulatory responsibility that the staff that I think they increased by three individuals statewide. Um we're now going to be subject to, 'cause all these prior activities that didn't require wetlands permits from New York State, D E C now did. And one example, just to give you that, is the one permit that would have been required last year for sure would have been the pesticide application permit, which was another division of D E C. That was submitted on May second, and that permit was issued May thirtieth. On the same day, we submitted the permit to D E C for freshwater wetlands, and as Rob said, that came on July third. So there's obviously two different timelines here. Uh so the minute we got the permit, we um spoke with uh Nicole White, who's the certified lake manager that is Little Bear Environmental. And we had to coordinate with her, which was A, D E C needs a seven uh day uh notice period, so we commenced that. And also, she obviously has a a schedule, so the uh we're booked for July twenty-second, and that's on our uh, you know, application of um it's like a double copper-based um uh herbicide that's gonna be applied to the lake. Uh it's only gonna be applied to approximately a third to a half of the lake, because again, to your point, this isn't a swimming pool. So some of the requirements, because we have an outlet uh for this stream, you can't uniformly and unilaterally apply it to, you know, every area of 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 surface water. Uh so we're focusing on closer to, I'll say, that dock area, the inlet area, the stream uh where all of this um, you know, um product is going to be applied. And then over time, uh you know, through, you know, not only um breakdown and dilution, but also retention time to actually allow for that delay before those waters get to the outlet and then eventually, you know, with with discharge downstream. So so every everything that you've said is is true. This all needs to be planned, controlled. Um and even, you know, the products you use, the 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 amounts that you use, you know, you can't just pack up the truck and put up the hose and then just start pumping it and stopping when you feel like it. So so I, you know, everything has been, you know, by the book and in regulatory compliance. And as I said also, you know, the timing of this work, you know, maybe in a perfect world, we wish we did it three weeks earlier, but there's obviously a big swath of a calendar year in the Northeast where you I guess you can do this, but it would be totally ineffective and pointless and a wasted money. So you really there's a lot that needs to come together in order to hit that, you know, right window, and you know, that's where we are now. Uh I've visited the pond weekly. Um Robert asked me a question and I'll share. He says, you know, how come you you know, at least to this point, you know, we haven't had, you know, some of the issues that we had last year in terms of, you know, like a fish kill, like what's what's your opinion? And I said, well, and you know, visiting the pond over this time, I think having all this rain uh definitely um impacted some of the, we'll say, dying or returning um blooms that they couldn't re-enter the system. That if you stood on that bridge in Getney and looked downstream, you would see that some of the duckweed actually made it over the spillway and then was settling into the to the stream. And then as the waters receded, would then become part of the soil, and it was almost more of a fertilization process for for the landform. It wasn't, you know, putting those nutrients back into the system. So I think we had an adequate amount of flushing, not necessarily to inhibit this particular, you know, organism from doing what it does as a floating aquatic. But certainly from like a nutrient load perspective, not necessarily um impacting the uh the D O levels. And I said, you know, to to prove my point, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, there were a couple of cormorants, which I had never seen before in Getney, just kind of floating on the surface, and they're die-bombing by several species, so they were going after their fish. And I know I've seen great blue hare in there, so usually when you see those, you know, even like snapping turtles, those like higher level predators, if there's something there for them to eat. You know, I'm not saying it's the perfect pond. I don't have the data to support that, but it's certainly, you know, there's there's visitors that are kind of looking to dine, and that's usually a a good sign.
Okay, that that's a good note to end on. Um thank you, Dennis. Um and I just wanna say that our staff is so highly professional and knowledgeable and um very, very diligent. And there are logistical timing and regulatory frameworks to be accounted for in doing this work, and it is not simple. And we hope that our residents appreciate our staff and engage with them, you know, whether it's on things that they're happy with or things that they wish could be different, but we certainly do hope that residents engage with our staff in in a in a respectful way that at least seeks to understand um why things happen the way they do. And I just wanna say that I appreciate your hard work and staying on top of this, especially considering all of the constraints um that have uh, you know, that we've had to consider around addressing this pond. Like you said, it's not a swimming pool. It's not someone's private pond, and uh we have a lot of constraints.
Understand.
So thank you, Dennis, um and thank you to Ike Cuzio as well.
Ike, do you have any any comment or anything you want to share?
Oh, Ike is here, okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hello.
Uh no, the the, yep, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh uh no, there's not a whole lot of detail I can add on top of what that is here, so um I think that pretty much covered where we're at and uh where we're headed.
Top of what that is, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Ike. Um and thank you, Rob, for keeping on.
I just have.
I I wanna mention that, you know, Dennis has been on top of this. We've been talking about this weekly.
Yeah. Well.
Dennis has been out to visit quite a few times out there, and he he gives me an update. And unfortunately, we had seen over the last two weeks the growth begin. And we've been waiting for this D E C permit, and even Nicole from Little Bear contacted D E C on our behalf uh to ask what was the holdup and, you know, we finally get got the permit on, you know, the what the thirty-day waiting period ended middle of June, and we didn't get the permit signed until July third.
It's like a two-week uh
Yeah.
and there's no comments and
Right, yeah, we had zero comments. And and that's what Nicole had found out, that they had no objection. There were were no obje- objectionable comments and uh yet they still hadn't signed the permit. So um everybody's been on top of it. Nobody's uh fallen asleep. We're we're aware of what's happening and uh we're in good hands with Dennis, that's for sure.
Yes.
Anytime we have Dennis come to a meeting, I find myself learning something new. And I think you missed your calling as a science teacher. I feel like I've said that before, but I've learned so much and thank you to Dennis and Ike, because I know the care that you put into your work and into keeping the town beautiful and vibrant and healthy, and the knowledge that you bring to the to the work that you do for the town. So I'm very grateful to you, Dennis, and to you, Ike. You've been very diligent as it re- uh relates to Getney Pond. We know that. And we want the community to know that, because our staff has been working so hard on this.
Oh, thank you. Um I'm not one of the specialists tonight, so I'm glad I was able to be of service in my capacity.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I I mean, I I echo the comments about, you know, thank you for sticking to the process and making sure this is done in the most safe and
Yep.
diligent manner. Um but I did have a question of curiosity.
Yeah.
Um how how long does it take once they are able to apply it before um might notice some recession of the road? Yeah, I mean, I I don't I don't want people to think that, you know, if they go the next morning, it's gonna be
Response?
Magic.
Yeah, I I'm just, you know, what's what's a reasonable
Got a question.
Right, I think that at least we Right, I think that at least we can then, you know, you should see some change, you know, I right, it's not you know, a napalm overnight type of response, I would agree, yes.
Okay, so I just a little bit of patience as well after it's applied.
Yeah. Yeah, because you know, all these, you know, even uh you know, if people are gonna use these products even on on their lawns or land, I mean, you need you know, unless unless you're gonna use the fire method, that's pretty instantaneous, but everything else is like, it takes time for an organism to have to like sort of incorporate it into its biology and you know, it's something that it isn't even negatively affect that biology, so it takes some time to, you know, and and these are quick boom, bust cycle type of organisms en masse, so has to get a lot of them before visually people start to, right, notice that induction.
Th- thank you for that.
Sure.
Anyone else?
No.
Thank you Dennis and Ike. Okay. Good, so now we're up to administrative items, Bob, you wanna run through, go on.
Uh we have a retroactive payment of claims dated June twenty seventh. We have the authorization toward the contract for uh veterinary services for the heating oil tank replacement project at Millwood Water Treatment Plant. Uh that's in the amount of seventy nine thousand two hundred ninety three dollars. Uh we have the authorization to share the services of the Omnia Partners bid for the purchase of the boiler at the Chappack. Uh that's a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. We have the authorization to solicit proposals for the purchase of masonry repair for the parks and recycling garage. Uh we have the authorization to purchase water maintenance materials. Uh these are hydrants uh for our inventory, so that we have them in place when we need to replace them, uh thirty four thousand six seventy three. And we have the authorization to purchase paving services from Avelo Contracting Corporation, um the amount of one point five three million dollars. We have the authorization to attend uh conference uh for the assessors up in Ithaca at Cornell. Uh that's an annual event, cost not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. Uh we have the authorization to adopt a local law regarding camping in public places. Uh we have the authorization to accept three cash bond agreements for the Kittle House, uh the amounts are a hundred and sixty one thousand, four hundred and seventy six thousand and forty seven thousand six hundred. And then we have the author- authorization to reject all prior bids and award the contract for summer camp bus to uh Ryer Cliff and First Charter. Any ques- questions on the administrative items?
No, thanks Rob.
I just wanna make sure we have um the local law in our, yeah, we do, okay, I see it, okay. Alright, thank you Rob. And now I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the work session and open the town board meeting.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Okay, any announcements?
Uh the only announcement I have tomorrow night, uh Wednesday night, is the first of our five summer concerts. Uh hoping for good weather out here on Rec Field and in the gazebo.
Excellent, okay. Um supervisors report, I will I will hold for the town newsletter coming out on Thursday since it's getting a bit late. Um any administrative?
Yeah, I'll just mention a couple of things, uh summer camp started last week, uh first of six weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Uh good feedback so far, I hope everyone's having a good time there. Uh the solar panel project at the uh Chappaqua Performing Arts Center is uh well underway and uh looking pretty good, if you've driven by, uh Walter's been providing daily updates and pictures and then quite a few panels are already up there. Uh they have the electricians working on the uh inside work and uh that should be ready to go within the next week or two. Uh and finally, we just uh mentioned authorization for road paving. Uh they are looking to start that probably next week. So I think they're gonna work with the uh contractor to see what best works into their plans, where they're gonna start, I'm not sure exactly, but uh that'll start next week and then continue on and off through the end of uh August, we try to wrap that up usually before school goes back in session.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, that's enough, it's good. Alright then, uh now we have reached the public comment period, um anyone for public comment, please come up to the microphone, state your name and state your place of residence.
Uh good evening, Laura Lennon, uh resident of Newcastle.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, um I know Dennis has left, but as a private citizen, as opposed to a public servant, I'd like to say he's always responsible and always incredibly helpful, so much appreciated. I submitted this uh to the website uh prior to the meeting, um but in case, may I approach the bench?
Yes.
In in case you didn't um have a chance or the interest, whatever, look at this.
Thank you, we did get we did get it.
Um. No offense taken?
I did look at it, thank you.
Um so uh I I'm trying to be helpful about the um use of gas powered leaf blowers. Um and there's nothing like supporting an argument with data. So I like to take a walk each morning for an hour or so and I walk in different neighborhoods. And so over a two week period of time, I just made note of um what was going on and whether uh leaf blowers were in use. Um I have a separate spreadsheet which shows the addresses, so if anyone thinks I made this data up. Um and I reported no one, I can't imagine um attending um forty depositions for two weeks of walking. Um but what I found is that um during this uh fifteen day period, forty two observations were of lawn mowing, there were some other observations too, and forty, ninety five percent included the use of gas powered leaf blowers. Um there were also leaf blowers used by arborists, gas powered, a gutter cleaner um and a driveway cleaner for sealing the driveway. Um and I called two of the landscaping companies because they were doing multiple um properties in an in an area, so they were um obviously committed to the work they were doing there. And in both cases, it was a very cordial conversation and um in both cases, the person who um took my call acknowledged awareness of the law. And in one case blamed the crew for not using electric leaf blowers. And in the other case said, um it's very difficult because the batteries run down and then you have to recharge them. And I said, well, it's the law. And um a week later, I saw his crew using gas powered leaf blowers again, so. Um I also observed um employees of the town using a gas powered leaf blower to clear clippings from about twenty feet of the Quaker Street sidewalk when weeds had been cut. And there were a couple of uh town uh vehicles parked on Kip Street, so I knocked on the glass and spoke to one of the town employees and I said, don't you know they're illegal? And the answer was, the town is allowed to use them. And I said, well, don't you have any battery powered leaf blowers? And the answer was, no, the town won't buy them for us. Um and this was a very small job, this wasn't like clearing athletic fields. The other thing I learned, um I requested permission of Chief Carroll to ask um how many summonses had been issued and he said, I just said I didn't wanna harass him. And he said he could ask once a month, I could ask once a month. So I um asked him on July first what the record was for June. And there were eight uh reports to the police and two summonses were issued. So that gives you a sense of um how um dominant um enforcement is in terms of affecting the the use of leaf blowers. So these are my conclusions. The use of gas powered leaf blowers remains in widespread use despite the acknowledged awareness of the ban by town residents, which I reported last time I spoke during the public phone, and landscapers. That gas powered leaf blowers dominate the use of leaf blowers for lawn maintenance. There is neither active nor effective enforcement of the ban and I asked Chief Carroll whether there would be any patrolling and he said no. Um he said if there were incidental observations, a summons could be issued, they wouldn't be patrolling. And that the town uses gas powered leaf blowers for small jobs, which was a disappointment to me. So my recommendations are that the town designates an employee to patrol. I mean, I came up with forty violations in, you know, fourteen, fifteen hours and I was walking, imagine someone in a vehicle. And that the town purchases at least one electric leaf blower, I subsequently learned that, actually the town does own electric leaf blowers, so so much for that. And I'd like to also just um, you know, present a a model to you for potential revenue associated with this. Um I observed forty um gas blowers, if they were all issued on the homeowners, issued summonses and um uh accepted the violation, um two hundred and fifty dollars violation, that'll be ten thousand dollars generated by one person walking for one hour a day over two weeks. So I think you could pay for an employee to spend part of their time. And you might not wanna do this, but hey, you could put in the weekly newsletter, twenty people got summonses for their um landscapers using gas powered leaf blowers and it's two hundred and fifty dollars a hit. Uh anyway, are there any available workers? Um I've observed a parking officer, busy in the morning, check, early morning, checking the the parking lot and I I don't know what the parking officer does other than that, it looked like there was a practice session at eleven at the one morning at the intersection of um the exit from the uh railway station and South Greedley Avenue, didn't look to me as though there was so much traffic that you needed directions there. And I I don't know what the animal control officer does ninety nine percent of the time, just just thoughts, so.
Thank you very much for the information, we will take all of that into serious consideration, thank you, appreciate um you're bringing this to our attention.
Any questions?
No, this is very helpful, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't know if I need to speak into this.
Uh you can speak into the microphone, I'll just state your name and your place of residence, please.
Hello everyone, I'm Suganti Balaspramaniyan, I live in Millwood, close to Rockies, Delhi, I'm sure all of you know that. Um I'm coming here uh primarily as a concerned mom and a concerned citizen and the reason for my concern is the proposed project Maple, the pipeline development for and the infrastructure to build the a gas pipeline and I'm really very concerned. As a mom, because my, I have two children, here's my first son, Santosh Nandabalan, and my second one, Sandeep, he's at home, he's asthmatic and um for his health reason and for other children and other people, I think this proposed project is going to be very disastrous in terms of environmental pollution. As a concerned citizen, not just for my children, but for everybody in Westchester and in the town of Newcastle, I think this project should not be allowed to go forward. The other thing is, these big projects need a lot of infrastructure and things are not going to get built by themselves and who's gonna have to foot the bill? We already heard complaints about a raise in Con Ed rates and this is only going to add to that. So I'm here just to register my concern and last time, we had a similar thing happening in Dance Camber and I came here along with my son and being a very progressive community, you all helped us to actually make sure that that didn't go through. So I'm hoping for a similar result for stopping this uh project Maple. I'm gonna give it to my son who knows more about fossil fuels and why we should get rid of it, so I'm gonna ask Santosh to talk a little bit about it.
Uh there's not much more to add, that's basically it, uh climate change is bad, air pollution is bad, uh high uh utility bills are half that. Um and especially for someone like me that's trying to think about starting a family, when I go to the grocery store, I don't wanna think about, do I pick out this chicken or do I pay my Con Ed bill? Um so uh I will also kind of, I guess, approach approach the bench. What what we've been doing and and there's a big uh coalition of climate and civic organizations, so Food and Water Watch, New York Community for Change, Indivisible's, uh a ton of groups have been coming together and coalescing uh to fight Project Maple and we've gotten like a big uh elected official opposition against it. Assemblywoman Dana Levenberg, uh Assemblymember uh Chris Burdick, they, these guys have all kind of championed this, Congressman George Latimer as opposed to Project Maple. But the reason there's a big sense of urgency now is recently there was this meeting uh between uh our president uh and Governor Hokel um where the president is kind of trying to bully the state into pushing previously rejected pipelines and opening up our state to new fossil fuel infrastructure, wherein the last ten years, we've done a really good job actually holding the line and like really fighting for climate change. Um Westchester's a big reason that's happened, we have like gotten a ton of municipal resolutions and done a ton of activism to ensure that our base and our voice here is heard to stop fossil fuel infrastructure. Uh but now this is re-coming again because of the federal administration's desire to push more frac gas pipelines. Won't go into a huge tirade of why that's bad, we know about the flooding, we know methane has a fugitive gas um with leaked pipelines, is super accelerative of climate change. What we're asking you guys to do is to pass a resolution in opposition, not only to Project Maple, but there are two other pipelines. Um the Williams Nessie Pipeline, which is currently in a very expediated public comment period that we think they will will make longer, but that hasn't happened yet. Um that's with the D E C and could be a decision as early as this November on that on that. If that pipeline is approved, that will certainly grease the wheels for Enbridge's application to expand uh Project Maple. There's also another pipeline, and that pipeline is uh from New Jersey to below the Rockaways in New York. Another pipeline that's also on the table that has uh put an application with the D E C, is the expansion of the Williams Constitution Pipeline. This goes through the southern tier up till Albany. Um and also would would be a detriment to those communities and to what my mom said, is this falls on ratepayers, we're gonna have to pay an arm and a leg to pay for more pollution, higher bills and getting rid of the opportunity for uh green jobs. So I think there's a lot we can do in terms of building electrification, I think there's a lot we can do in terms of renewable energy output, building fossil fuel infrastructure isn't the answer. Um so I'm gonna just give you guys, there's a packet here, this has kind of some info on the three pipelines at large, as well as the one that um you guys are definitely familiar with the Aine pipeline.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um think of another. Okay. Um but yeah, ultimately, a memorializing resolution would help us a lot. Recently, Mayor Pugh did this in Crowton, the day of opposed all three pipelines and new fossil fuel infrastructure. Austin did that two weeks before that, before that Haysing Hudson, so you can kind of imagine all the lights were went up in all the municipalities. We want that to happen before a decision is made on Williams Nessie Pipeline.
Okay, thank you very much.
For sure.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, um anyone online for public comment? Okay. I see, uh Melissa Hoffman?
Hi. I'm Melissa Hoffman.
Um my name is Melissa Hoffman, I am an organizer with Food and Water Watch for the Westchester region. Um and I wanted to come here and set also talk about.
Can you state your, um sorry, can you state your place of residence as well, please?
Um I live in Kipsey, um and I organize in the Westchester area. So I'm here to um express my support for Newcastle passing a resolution against these pipeline expansions. Um it's widely unpopular among New Yorkers to continue with dirty trash. Um and Newcastle being so close to the existing Algonquin Pipeline and Indian Point, it's really crucial that we can stand up and oppose this project and oppose um pipeline expansions. As many as no pipelines and fast gas expansion causes water and air pollution, it's a public health crisis, many people suffer from respiratory illnesses in Westchester County, um there is a derating from the American Lung Association for air quality. Pipelines are also very dangerous, they cause accidents. Pipelines are also very dangerous, they cause accidents, explosions and leaks. Pipelines are also very dangerous, they cause accidents, explosions and leaks. And they lead to destruction of our environment. And they lead to destruction of our environment. They worsen climate change and promote more fracking.
They worsen climate change and promote more fracking.
They maintain a reliance on fossil fuels.
They maintain a reliance on fossil fuels. And I think
And I think most crucially for us here in New York, we have such a um incredibly strong climate law. Expanding cracked gas violates that climate law, the CLCBA, because we have very strong targets to reduce greenhouse gas emissions as much as possible.
Because we have very strong targets to reduce greenhouse gas emissions as much as possible.
Um and making sure that we stop building out any new fossil fuel infrastructure is very crucial
and they should stop building out and fossil fuel infrastructure is very crucial
for protecting New Yorkers for protecting New Yorkers um and residents from the homes of pipelines and fracked gas. um and residents from the homes of So I wanted to come to voice my support for passing a resolution against this
So I wanted to to voice my support for passing a resolution against this
to stand up um to Trump's push for new pipelines in New York.
um to Trump's push for new pipelines in New York.
We also know that pipelines and um
We also know that pipelines
and um leads to rate pair utility bills going climbing up for rate pairs, we have to put the bill for
leads to rate pair utility bills going climbing up for rate pairs, we have to put the bill for
this infrastructure expansion, they're expensive, not necessary.
this infrastructure expansion, they're expensive, not necessary.
There has been studies to show that renewable energy, if we can completely convert the grid to one hundred percent electricity can
There has been studies to show that renewable energy, if we can completely convert the grid to one hundred percent electricity can
um one hundred percent renewable electricity can actually be more affordable.
um one hundred percent renewable electricity can actually be more affordable.
So there's so many reasons why we need to stop fossil fuel infrastructure, move to renewable energy
So there's so many reasons why we need to stop fossil fuel infrastructure, move to renewable energy
and Newcastle being able to pass a resolution
and Newcastle being able to pass a resolution
calling on
calling on
Governor Hochul to stop this project
Governor Hochul to stop this project
and stop new fossil fuel expansion is crucial and would be much appreciated.
and stop new fossil fuel expansion is crucial and would be much appreciated.
Newcastle would be joining the movement, um as Santosh said, of other towns and counties, Rockland County Newcastle would be joining the movement, um as Santosh said, of other towns and counties, Rockland County Haysing, Hudson, Austining and Peekskill have passed resolutions as well as Croton. Haysing, Hudson, Austining
and Peekskill have passed resolutions as well as Croton.
Um so the movement is growing and we'd love to work with Newcastle on joining it, so thank you so much.
Um so the movement is growing and we'd love to work with Newcastle on joining it, so thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Um anyone else for public comment, anyone online?
The other hand is raised.
Okay, last call for anyone in person who hasn't spoken. Okay, alright. That will end the public comment period, thank you very much, everybody who spoke. Um we are now up to our consent agenda, Rob, I know that you've gone over much of these items on the web session, but since we are at the meeting
We will.
Yep.
But you know, just for the sake of argument and understanding, uh Lena, is it really always necessary you know, after we've gone over the administrative items to go over the same items again? Because um you know, it's just a repetition, although we are at the meeting portion as opposed to the work session.
Right.
We've always done that and I I just I just wanna question it.
You don't have to, because you've heard the work session, you kind of go into the actual meeting, so
It's really one, it's it seems to be one meeting, so
And it's It is, and it's basically available online for, so you you know what you're doing and if anyone in the public wants to review it, it's already in the packet, so they go
Right, and it's just the fact that we have just gone over
It's like we asked that, wondering that for two and a half years.
We always have done that ever since I was for but for three for uh three years longer than I've been supervisor, we've always done that
We've been wondering that for so long, who I mean that, why should I do that?
and maybe today's time to to acknowledge this.
Time for change, okay.
Yes, please.
Time for change, um
Okay.
So although I don't mind, Rob, if you really want to do it, it's really okay. I don't wanna steal your thunder.
No, it's not my thunder, I I explained it before.
And uh and the proposed actions are well delineated in the resolutions.
Yeah, I will say, there's one proposed action that we did not include it.
Yes.
So, okay. So, yes, so then we should
You have a resolution for it, but I'll call it out, it's proposed action, it's a separate resolution.
Yes.
Just to accept the audit results, we usually do that um when Alan was here and
Yes, yes, yes.
we have to submit uh our audit results for justice court to the justice court system, New York State, so
Right.
um they usually like to see a resolution or minutes acknowledging that the town board has seen and heard the audit results, so that's what that is.
Okay. Thank you, Rob, so after many, many years of everyone wondering the same question, we have finally had a resolution. Alright, okay, so let's start off with the consent agenda items, Holly, do you wanna start off?
I will, uh I move to adopt the items one through eight, it's listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of six hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and sixty five dollars and fifty six cents. Listed on the summary AP check register and detail voucher detail report, both dated June twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. I move to authorize the hiring of Mario Medina and Alexander McCall for the position of seasonal laborers within the Recreation and Parks Department at the hourly rate of twenty dollars per hour, effective July fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Don't need to state that I refuse myself from that matter.
Yep.
Is it an abstention or a recuse?
No, refusal.
Recuse, okay.
I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals for the position of recreation attendants within the Recreation and Parks Department to serve as camp counselors at the corresponding rates, names and rates listed below, effective retroactively to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Need you one more?
Go one more.
I move to authorize the change in the rate of pay for the following individuals uh listed below who serve as camp counselors at the corresponding rates also listed below, effective retroactively to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, turn.
I move to authorize the extension of the part-time social media coordinator Matthew Hernandez for the total stipend amount of six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars to be paid in the amount of five hundred and eighty dollars bi-weekly for a period of twenty four weeks effective retroactively from July fifth, twenty twenty five through December nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to adopt a local law to amend the Town of Newcastle Town Code, chapter one, two, three, vehicles and traffic, article two, parking by adding a new section one twenty three nine point one entitled No Camping on Public Places. Um after public parking lots. One, two, three dash nine, public parking lots.
Move a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think you
Yeah, sorry, one more.
Aye.
And um
Tell me we thought
I moved You thought this, right, number seven?
Yeah. I move to accept the town's annual comprehensive financial report and independent auditor's report from P K F O'Connor Davies the town and justice court for the period ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you every everyone, thank you and good night.